We have four members. Dylan is unable to make it. Bob is away online on the phone, so we'll do everything by roll call. We will start with open forum. Anybody from staff have anything for open forum?
I do, Mr. Chair. So tomorrow evening at 6:30 in this room, there'll be a design shirt for Granaville neighborhood. There'll be a couple of properties that'll be featured in some research that was done by NIMCOG. And they'll just be leading a discussion on some properties, including 12 North Main and Granaville Materials. So we're looking for neighborhood input. You don't have to be a resident of Granaville to attend, although we would encourage any of the board members if you wanted to, to attend. And they'll be at 6:30 tomorrow, right in this meeting room.
Awesome. Jeff, anybody else?
Nothing, sir.
Anybody from the board? Bob?
I'm good.
All right. Anybody from the audience, anything for open forum? All right, moving right along. We don't have any public hearings this evening. For general business, we're just going to pop to item B, PB 2102 subdivision, definitive subdivision for 037 Carlisle Road. Diane Lane?
I think it's pretty straightforward. It's a bond reduction. The town engineers signed off on it. I'm here in case you had any questions. It's just a matter of business then you're in.
Joe?
Sorry, it's Dave Guthrie.
I have no comments. I don't know if the engineer has any comments?
No, we've reworked, inspected it, and worked through all the work that they've completed out there and signed off on the bond reduction.
All right. Anybody for the board? Bob, you have any comments?
No, I'm good.
Tony, comments?
I'm good, thank you.
Darren, comments? No. All right, I'm just trying to pull it up here for we can get a motion on it. Do you have the number? You want to make a motion on it?
Chair, I move that we approve the request for bond reduction for PB 2102, definitive subdivision. And OSRD Stormwater Management at 037 Carlisle Road. Diane Lane?
In the amount of, so we're looking at, you have the amount, retainage of, is it 203, 32777? Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Bob?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
And I say aye.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Joe, do you have any concerns with that minor modification to the HOA while I'm here?
No. It's been reviewed by town council. They're happy with it.
Okay, great. Thank you all. Take care.
Thank you. All right, so moving right along to item C, PB 2215, special permit flex- flexible development subdivision modification, 85 Carlisle Road, Parker Landing.
Good evening, members of the board. For the record, attorney Melissa Robbins from Farrelan Robbins. We're here tonight, I know it says minor modification, but we actually did get the as-built. They are hot off the presses. We apologize. They were just submitted today. We had some issues getting the curbing in. The curbing is in. We know engineering staff was able to go do an inspection. I know your question's going to be, have they been able to review this plan yet? And the answer is no. But I know that the board's next meeting is not until July 17th. So I would request that the board approve this plan subject to engineering's review and comment. Should there be any issues, I suspect there's going to be none, because as you can recall, this was substantially complete before the project actually started. The infrastructure was complete. But should there be any, we would come back to the July 17th meeting and address any of those concerns. So again, my request is to accept this plan subject to engineering's review and approval and allow occupancy permits to issue.
Okay, great. Joe?
Yeah, so just to kind of recap, so the conditions of approval that would need to be modified were highlighted in the packet. But essentially, the condition called for those plans to be reviewed and approved by engineering before the first certificate of occupancy, so obviously there's three total. So I guess the board could decide if you were willing to issue one, two, or three, if you were willing to modify the condition.
I forgot to add as well that there is a bond for this project. So not only do you hold the occupancy permit subject to this condition, there's also a bond in place.
Attorney Robbins, how many permits do you look to issue?
Three. We have three buildings basically done out there. All the infrastructure's in and approved, and the rest of it is secured.
So, thank you, Mr. Chair. Paul Sterrett, town engineer. His counsel is represented. The engineering department has proactively inspected out on this site. We've had a good experience with this contractor. He's been very responsive, he and his crew, been very responsive to us on a subdivision of this size. Yes, we do require the as-built to be submitted, and that does give us a catch-all for significant problems. But we don't anticipate any on this particular site, so we were not concerned. But for the record, we have not had the opportunity to review the plan, per se.
Understood. Great. I'll go to the board. Bob, any questions, comments?
I appreciate what I've heard. I guess I'm very leery about voting to approve something where we don't have engineering comments back on the as-built. And I guess, I'm a little fazed we have, we've got the as-built. So I really feel kind of, I feel like I'm being pressured.
Okay. Tony? I'm sorry, Bob, were you done?
I was not.
Okay.
I also feel that the board is one of the first places in the future that homeowners will come and complain if something does happen, and they find it. So I get, I'm not real comfortable voting this, even if we can supervise over, we're waiting in comment. Doesn't bother me to ask a question. So I thought they were voting for it this time. I really wasn't.
Joe?
I'd like to add, I saw the, what you sent out today, and I am concerned, and again, I'm the newbie to the group. So I know this project, you know, started, stopped, and there's, it was, had some relief for the storm drain, for the storm, you know, stormwater system. But the letter that came with the package today talked about that the stormwater basin contains slightly less as-built volume than the designed volume. So my question is, is this a further reduction, or is this the reduction from what would be required today?
No, this would be the reduction from what was required today. But again, and to Mr. Chaffra's point, I truly appreciate that engineering staff needs to review and approve this. And I even made my suggestion that should there be an issue, should engineering staff find any concerns out here whatsoever, we will hold off and come back to this board to address any concerns. We don't foresee there being any concerns. Because of the point you just made, that 90% of the infrastructure that related to these houses was already in place by the time we took over. That's why there's not a covenant for this project. And that's why we agreed to come forward with the plan instead of doing anything else. But we also have the bond on top of that. So the board does have security here for anything that's non-completed. And I guess if the board are going to do something partial, we would please request that they release at least one occupancy permit, because we do have a closing that will be held up an additional month if the board doesn't take action, since you're not meeting every two weeks.
Attorney Robbins, when is that closing schedule?
The 26th.
Anything else, Tony?
No.
Sir?
I'm actually, I'm okay with waiting engineers, approving with comments to be received from engineering. With particular attention paid to the volume of the basin there. You know, I think if there's any, if there's any issues, then we'll be back on the 20th, or, you know, in July. So I'm okay with it, as long as engineering gives it a full review, and if engineering's okay with it, then I'd be okay approving, subject to approval by engineering.
I feel the same way. I can clarify, Mr. Chair, if it helps, that the engineering department will be the first one waving a red flag if we had any concerns about this particular contractor's performance or work. Just has not been the case, and as you know, my words are flattery for contractors are few and far between. But, you know, we are, we are not, we're in the dark, but we do have that level of comfort.
Bob, any further thoughts after hearing the rest of the board?
No, I'm just not feeling real comfortable here, and I just don't understand why it was today that we got as-built and why it wasn't one or two weeks ago. I understand for another month, but we're not the ones who didn't submit the as-built.
So, Mr. Chair, we did have two issues. One of them was getting curbing on the site. We finally were able to get the curbing. We finally were able to get the curbing installed. And not that this is that, this board's concern, but it's also the season of summer vacations. And so by the time our curbing got installed, our engineer was not available to come do the survey work. It's just timing. And should this, if, in all honesty, if this board was meeting every two weeks, it wouldn't be such a critical issue. But where we're a month out, it does become a critical issue, especially for the new homeowner.
So can I ask?
Please.
Is there a way to allow the one occupancy permit and hold the rest? Is that?
Bob, would you be amenable to that, issuing one instead of the three?
I would definitely be more in favor of that, yeah.
How about you?
Yeah, I would be in favor of that.
It's actually two.
I can hold mine.
Okay, so we would ask for two. The third is actually the applicant's itself home. So if we were going to hold two, we would ask, if we are going to hold one, please hold that one and allow the other two for sale units to go. And again, I want to be clear with the board, not only do you still have that occupancy permit to be held, you also have a full bond for all the rest of the outstanding works. You have double security out there. Also, zero occupancy permits will be granted if Mr. Sterrett says there's an issue. So there's really no issue of concern here, that the board doesn't have a level of comfort with belt and suspenders to make sure that the work's done out there properly.
Yeah, I mean, I'm very comfortable issuing the three, you know, with engineering's review and their sign-off, because I know they're not going to let it through unless they're happy.
Yeah, and Bob, keep in mind, engineering was out there, I think, today, right, Paul? So?
Yes, and last week, so we've made several trips out there.
So, I mean, I'm inclined-
Joe's been out there as well.
Yeah, several times. To say, issue the two, hold the third until the last meeting, the next meeting. I don't know how the rest of the board feels. I mean, we could, I guess, put it to a vote.
Yeah, I'd be fine with that.
Tony?
So the second one, is it also in the same situation where there's a closing before the next board meeting?
Yes, and the third one, we can hold.
Okay, I'd be fine with that then, too, issuing only the two.
Bob, anything else we can do to make you feel more comfortable?
No, I'm just very frustrated we didn't get these before today. I can't express my frustration enough.
Understand. Understand.
And I will-
I hear that, I don't like it being, I mean, I don't like feeling like the blame's on us, because we're having a meeting in a month. There was all the time to get these prints to us a lot earlier, I believe.
And I don't, and this, maybe it's a little different over the phone. I don't feel that, you know, anybody's being blamed. I think it's a simple request, and I think there are protections. That's why I'm comfortable with it.
And for the record, I do agree that really, dropping as-built at the last minute isn't really reasonable. But, you know, again, situation-
But I don't think it's a normal practice for Attorney Robbins and for my department.
The other thing that really makes me uncomfortable here is setting precedent. I mean, what happens next month when we have somebody else come in? How do we differentiate one from the other in terms of not complying with the regulations, in terms of what they have to submit? I think it's setting precedent here.
And that's a good point. However, I think in my mind, the support of engineering, or the discussion from engineering is what makes a difference. So, unless there's any other discussion, can somebody make a motion for PB 2215, 85 Carlisle Road, Parker Landing, for the issuance of two certificates of occupancy, subject to the approval of the as-built plan by engineering?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, Bob?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
And I say aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, moving along to PB 2311, 472, 476 Grotton Road, De Donato Drive, request for endorsement of plans, executions of covenant.
Good evening again, members of the board. For the record, attorney Melissa Robbins. We're here tonight for approval of this declaration of restrictive covenants. Again, thank you, Mr. Chaffra, for going through this. There was a couple typos in there, so I appreciate you picking those up before execution. These are the general, normal restrictive covenants put in place by the board. The only difference with this one is that we've reserved one lot from this, because it's actually the lot that has frontage on Grotton Road. Other than that, this is the standard covenant for planning board action. The other thing you have before you today is the milars for endorsement. And once these are endorsed and the covenant is signed by the board, these will be put on record, as well with the decision, the stormwater decision. We also have the order of conditions, as will all go on record. And then we're hoping within the next two weeks, we will have a pre-construction meeting and actually start construction.
Nice.
So we're really excited to get moving out here, and we'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
All right, Joe?
Nothing really to add, Mr. Chair. Staff did go through, making sure we caught any minor changes that need to be made. So we went through that with the project engineer. Other than that, just looking for the board's vote.
Great. All right, Bob? Bob?
Now, let me get to the next person for a second, please.
Sure, absolutely. Uh, Tony?
Just a quick question. This has been, I assume, approved under a conventional subdivision. Is that correct?
Yes. It doesn't happen very often, but this is a conventional subdivision, no open space, just straightforward and conformance with your definitive subdivision rules and regulations.
Okay, thank you.
Love it. Anything else?
No.
Darren?
No, I had a couple of typos, but it sounds like Bob already picked those up, so.
All right, anything else?
Nope.
Okay, back to you, Bob.
Yeah, I'm just, I was trying to review for those typos, but, yeah, so if those, if the typos got picked up, I'm fine. I noticed things like "of" instead of "of". It picked up a thing about owner, "are" the owner. I was wondering if that had gotten fixed. And also, where it said, provided however that a mortgage who holds, acquires title, I thought that should have been mortgagee. Is that correct?
It's mortgage-er. But you are correct. That's the proper, that's the proper term. It should be there.
Okay, mortgage, yeah. But it's not a mortgage who acquires title.
Correct. You were correct there.
Okay, and that, that's been fixed?
That's been fixed, yeah. On the copy that's up, it's been fixed. And we made, we found the other one. There was a typo for, I think it's a tat instead of that, so, and we picked that up as well.
Yeah.
Okay, then I'm fine. Good, thank you.
All right, Bob, thank you. All right, no, I don't have anything. As long as the typos are fixed, I can't see anyway. I'm good. So, do we have a motion to, I guess, a motion to endorse the plans and restrict the executive, execute the covenant for PB 2311, definitive subdivision for 472, 476 Grotton Road? Their second?
Second.
All those in favor, Bob?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
And I say aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, moving back to this general business, item A. Thank you, Mr. Sterrett, for waiting.
Paul Sterrett, town engineer. Thank you, Mr. Chair, with us tonight. If you ladies want to come and have a seat here. Emily Serbo, lead engineer at Ty &amp; Bond, and been our stormwater consultant for-
2007.
With me for almost 18 years now, we can say that. And the project manager with Ty &amp; Bond, Evelyn Ramos, also a Westford resident, has a personal investment in this. So we're here this evening to, as a warmer upper, for the regulation changes that you may consider at some point. We haven't asked for a public hearing to open up the regulations for change, but these are some, what we're going to talk about tonight, are some of the things that the EPA are asking communities, MS4 communities, separated storm sewer system communities like Westford, to consider in their regulations. And so the team from Ty &amp; Bond is here tonight to make a case for some of those items and to answer any questions that you may have. And then at some point in the future, when we next open the regulation for discussion, that's a possibility, just to make Jeff smile.
Okay, so I will take it from here?
Yeah.
So you have control of the PowerPoint?
Yes, Joe does. Yeah, Joe's got it.
Joe does, okay, all right. Next slide, I guess. Okay, so. So just to go over a little background of what EPA requires in the small MS4, or the stormwater management program. So one concept that they included in multiple sections in the permit is requiring the use of low-impact development to the maximum extent feasible. Low-impact development is, it used to be sort of confused with green infrastructure. Low-impact development, we're really thinking of it more as like the site design, more preservation of your natural landscaping, minimizing impervious area, treating stormwater as a resource, not as just, you know, runoff. So they're also requiring green infrastructure as well, to a maximum extent practicable. And that's something that I think has been coming for a long time, but it's really been made official in the latest general permit. Next slide. And so along that idea, EPA required all municipalities that operate under this program to do two things. First was to develop a report that evaluates your local regulations, so all of them. So your general bylaws, zoning bylaws, any other regulations and programs, to determine feasibility of making certain green infrastructure practices allowable. And those are green roofs, infiltration practices, and water harvesting devices. So fairly straightforward. The second piece of this assessment was to look at your street design and parking lot guidelines and other requirements that affect creation of impervious cover. So this really goes hand in hand with the same concept as the stormwater fee. We talked a lot about it during development of the stormwater fee, about the relationship between more impervious cover related to development projects and degradation of your water bodies in town. So that, that relationship has been established for many, many years. And there are several water bodies in Westford that are considered impaired, so, you know, we're seeing the impacts of that actually on the ground. So what EPA wanted every community to do related to those two assessments is come up with recommendations and a proposed schedule to make those recommendations. So what EPA didn't say was, everybody needs to update zoning by a certain time. They didn't specify it like that. Like the stormwater bylaw and regulations, they were very explicit about when they wanted that done. This, we looked at and said, okay, we think we should, and I'll go over some of the broad recommendations. We think you could reopen subdivision, and we proposed a timeline. So that's what we want to talk about tonight, to make sure that's reasonable. And you'll see that the memo is fairly open-ended, so we're providing really a laundry list of some of the recommendations along those lines for consideration, knowing full well that once you open the public process, it could go in a number of directions. So that sets the stage. Next slide, please. So going back to the assessment portion of this, we did not invent this process. Mass Audubon did put out a tool for communities to use. It does go a little bit above and beyond what EPA is requiring, but it, it's a good assessment of, you know, how sustainable your code is. And so we've got those links in the presentation for you, if you are curious about it. And we've got that whole, it's a big spreadsheet that's filled out for all of your various bylaws and regulations. Next slide. So based on what we saw in that assessment, these were the main recommendations. So first was to look at subdivision rules and regulations. We gave a target date of July 2025, to have some revisions made to subdivision along the lines of, again, allowing green infrastructure practices and reducing generation of impervious cover. So with that in mind, some of the more specific recommendations in the memo were related to street design, encouraging green infrastructure, and reducing pavement requirements, stormwater management, really being consistent with what's in the revised stormwater regulations. Encouraging green infrastructure and low-impact development techniques where appropriate. So I want to make sure that there's a caveat there. Like if this doesn't take away your normal review process for each specific site, if green infrastructure is still not appropriate, EPA is not saying you absolutely need that. You can use traditional BMPs. Looking at driveways to potentially reduce maximum driveway widths, and then sidewalks, which- which I know, you know, sidewalks are important for a number of reasons, but if there are cases where you could reduce or eliminate some of the sidewalk requirements, again, it takes away some of that impervious cover. It's in direct conflict with complete streets, we totally recognize that. Next slide. The second recommendation was to revisit zoning bylaws, targeting a date to do this by July 2026. So again, you've got three years, I know that that can go by quickly. Recommended focus areas for this included some of the parking requirements and standards, so it's setting a maximum parking, setting maximum parking ratios and requirements, reduction of required number of spaces, inclusion of pervious materials in landscaped areas. The lot layout and dimensional and density requirements, so potentially setting limits on impervious lot coverage, although, you know, some feedback from other communities has been that's, it's really hard to enforce some of that, it's difficult to do. But again, knowing that connection between imperviousness and the water, we, we included it. Including green infrastructure in your setbacks and buffer areas, and reassessing minimum setback requirements to reduce impervious cover. And then last, some stormwater management and landscaping requirements. So that's all detailed in the memo, and, you know, wasn't going to go through each and every piece. And then, next slide. Oops, what did I do? We did also include some non-regulatory recommendations with a target date of July 2025. So one would just be verifying that building codes allow for the LID techniques that, in, in green infrastructure techniques that EPA is promoting, like rainwater harvesting. I think, everybody thinks of rain barrels, and that's fine, but water reuse gets a little trickier in Massachusetts. Providing opportunities for staff and, and board members to attend related workshops and conferences to, you know, learn more about green infrastructure. Implementing a green infrastructure demonstration project on town-owned property, which is already in progress, you know, so we're working with engineering department for op- looking for opportunities to do that. And then participating in rain barrel sale and distribution programs. So those were other things that we thought were a little easier to implement for the town. And with that, that is the end, and I guess we'll open it up to questions about the memo. You had the memo in your packet as well as the presentation.
All right. I got, just a quick question. So, um, street design encourage green infrastructure, can you give me an example of what that would be?
Street design, can you, do you have a particular section of the memo that you're...
I'm, I'm just looking at your presentation.
Oh.
So subdivision rules, regulation revisions, recommend focus areas include street design, encourage green infrastructure, reduce pavement requirements.
Yeah, right there.
That's the island.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Evelyn.
Yeah, uh, for example, some dead-end streets require a vegetated island. One of our recommendations was to make that a rain garden, a bio retention area.
Yeah, so more of a depression instead of usually, a lot of times they're raised. So it, it is vegetated, which is great, but it could collect stormwater runoff instead. So small changes to the way that's done.
And to encourage that.
Okay, oh, that makes sense.
And we have, Mr. Chair, if I may, we have implemented, uh, two of those in town already. Uh, one of, and we, when we initially looked at LIDs and green infrastructure years ago, we looked at opportunities in private developments and, and subdivisions that were not going to be public first. So Conservation Way, Joe Flaherty's project, was the first designed by Jeff Bram, and then Jeff Bram also did Heritage Way. That, they both have rain gardens and are, no, I'm sorry, Heritage Ways does. And then we did have one on Strawberry Lane down, uh, on the Lawton Farm subdivision from many, many years ago. Just kind of get our feet wet and see what those experiences were like. So we, we've done some with, with, with not bad results in the case of the rain gardens.
All right, great. I guess I'll go to the board. Bob, do you have any questions, any thoughts?
Yeah, no, I appreciate what Paul just said, because that was my question, was, uh, what were some examples? And I appreciate that, because now I, I, I know where that was. Um, one of the questions I had made, I'm not sure if it would be for, uh, the Paul or maybe for Jeff, if he's there, but, um, the rain barrel sale, I seem to recall we've done rain barrel sales in the past. Can anybody verify that? I thought we had...
Yeah, our recycle commission, I believe, had done, uh, I, I don't know that they continue to do that, Bob, but they've shifted their emphasis now to, uh, what are those vessels? The compost, composting, uh, we, we see those, in fact, three or four of them flew out of the door today at the highway department where they can pick, buy them and pick them up. But there, there was a run on rain barrels for a while, but I don't, I don't know that it's continued.
Okay.
Ellen Hardy's initiative some time ago, I, as I recall.
That, that was my recollection, too, the same, that same individual, so, okay. So, um, one, one other thing I did, um, I, I know there was a discussion of low-density versus high-density development. It seems to me, it would, it would be helpful to get some kind of a, a numerical recommendation or some kind of recommendation, uh, with respect to low-density versus high-density, as we consider some of these, um, measures. So that's my only comment, and that's probably something really, uh, as we move forward in the future, um, how we proceed with these recommendations for the different styles of developments. So, that's all.
Yep, good comments, Bob, thank you. Joni?
I think the only thing I would add is, um, in the briefing, it's mentioning, you know, reducing maximum street width. Should that be minimum, reducing minimum street width or reducing maximum?
Maximum, so we're trying to, you know, make those roads smaller, again, within...
Or driveway width, I guess.
Or driveway width, yeah. So bring that maximum allowable down, so you can't have these huge wide roads and driveways. And, and again, we recognize that when you're talking to the fire department, there's all going to be safety concerns. So these are all suggestions to think about how, how and where you could reduce that impervious cover, even if it is just by a few feet within those safety constraints, so.
Okay, so how would that be related to or work with things like pedestrian safety and, you know, bike, I mean, one of the things we desperately need is more bike paths or, you know.
In fact, wider roads to have a bike lane. So they, they seem a little contradictory, so I'm just wondering, I, I'm sure you guys have thought of it, but... Yeah.
Just something I wanted to throw out.
We agree. We agree, and you have, it is, it is in direct conflict with that. So you're hearing from one end, like you need this multi-modal transportation network and walkable, bikable roads. And then you have EPA saying more impervious cover is really detrimental to the environment. I'm not sure what the answer is. It seems like, um, where this is going is with some retrofit, sometimes in the right of way, where maybe you're, um, like in Lexington, where they're doing some infiltration trenches along the side of the road, so you can accommodate the, the different modes of transportation, but you're also collecting runoff. Many more smaller stormwater collection units. So just pu- being much more deliberate about collecting and infiltrating stormwater runoff. So, and, and again, those are not, is it considered green infrastructure? Probably not. It's an infiltration trench, but it's a very effective stormwater BMP, and that, and that would be okay. Okay. Thank you.
Great. Darren?
Yeah, Jeff tomorrow. Yeah, just thinking that parking might be an obvious first place to go. It may not be subdivision rules and regs, but obviously, I think it's well-known that there are certain parts of town where there's an abundance of parking, and that is, I think, an easier pill to swallow, reducing that than, say, maybe street widths or taking away from pedestrian measures, because, you know, there's many times of the year, there's sea of empty paving space for parking, but, and it's only used certain times a year. But that might be something that we need to look at anyhow for our multifamily housing.
Yeah, I think parking definitely needs to look at. I mean, like you said, there's places that there's abundance, and then you've got other places where you can't fit a, a larger car in.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, that's, my comment was going to be, I've said this all along, I mean, like, I, I live on a cul-de-sac that's, you know, the size of the Logan's tarmac. It's ridiculous, you can see the heat just powering, you know, in the summertime, coming off of that. It's like, why can't that be pavers or something that's pervious in there that can have drainage in there? Those, those types of things, I think, are a no-brainer.
That makes sense.
We've done, we've seen some projects around town where there's going to be overflow or whatever, you can put in the, you know, the engineered sort of blocks where the grass can grow around it and stuff. I think there's a lot more use for that.
Yeah, I would agree. I would agree. Great. Um, anybody have any else?
Yeah, I have one other question. Um, I know in the past when we've talked about, uh, the pervious pavement, it, it's always a balancing act, because, um, on one hand, you are putting more water back into the aquifer, uh, potentially, but you're also, um, not necessarily capturing all of the oils and, um, other pollutants that might be, uh, present in that parking lot. And so you, you don't have the traditional mechanisms for capturing those. Could, could that issue be addressed and how we would deal with that with pervious pavement?
I, I, I don't know that, Paul Starrett, town engineer, I don't know that we've answered the bigger problem with perv- pervious pavement, and that's, it's, it's, uh, long-term effectiveness without a continuous vacuuming. And, and we don't, on, on public parking lots or school parking lots, that would require us to contract or, or get the equipment that we need. Honestly, porous pavement has fallen out of favor, I think, in, in a lot of places. I don't know, uh, many municipal locations where it's been applied, but the pollutants are a concern. Vegetated swales, and I've seen the, the, um, some other applications in parking lots that will give a little bit of treatment, but without a rain garden, you're not going to get the bulk of the pollutants.
Right, and infiltrating practices do a fairly good job of removing a lot of that, but if you were in a land use with higher potential pollutant loading, you would be looking for pretreatment prior to infiltrating.
Right. Which we accomplish, interestingly, with our catch basins, uh, which in town are hooded, so we do try to get some of the gases and, uh, some of the pollutants that float on the surface, but, you know, that's, that's a continuous issue.
All right. Anything else, Bob?
Nope, that's it, thank you.
All right. Great, well, thank you very much for coming in, great presentation, and a lot of good information there.
We'll continue to work with permitting staff to etch out a timeline and start to think about strategies for meeting the goals that the EPA has set for us.
Great, awesome.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Starrett.
Rain barrel.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which I understand are available at the water department, they have a...
Yeah.
...sale once a year or something, is it once a year, I guess, so. Check the water department website.
Great. Okay, uh, moving right along, we have a discussion on trash recycle and recycling collection in subdivisions and other projects. Joe?
Well, that was quick, Joe. So we're not asking the board to make any decisions tonight, we just wanted to, you folks had wanted to have a, a discussion, we just wanted to start that process tonight. And as Joe and I started looking at our multifamily housing requirements, I just want to point out a couple of things for you to start thinking about. So first of all, uh, we did include the select board policy, I believe, in your packets again. Just want to point out that the current policy, it excludes multifamily developments consisting of four or more units. So they would not be eligible for solid waste and recycling pickup by the town. So, and the board might want to keep this in mind when we're drafting proposed zoning bylaw amendments to address the MBTA community's requirement. So on the one hand, you know, the multifamily housing, it's intended to be more sustainable, responsible, and so whether or not the town provides recycling, you may want to specifically put in some provisions or thoughts in a draft bylaw that perhaps does require, um, a recycling component if the project is a multifamily housing project, even if it's not to be picked up by the town's contractor, you still might want to think about having that discussion as part of the process. That, so that doesn't mean, though, that their policy, it might not prevent you from imposing conditions of approval about trash and recycling. And then, uh, we took a look at the current policy, and we may want to seek some clarification, because they say on the one hand that, um, there's a distinction between a multifamily development containing four or more units versus a multifamily dwelling containing four or more units. So you could have a multifamily development all in one lot, you could have like, say, twenty-seven dwelling units, it might be all in one lot, but what if they're comprised of one or two family dwellings? You know, what is the intent? Are they supposed to be eligible for pickup if they meet, say, the, the dimensional standards for turning around? Or what happens if it's mixed and, say, you have some multifamily buildings that have four or more units and you also have single-family detached dwelling units? So we think, maybe, seek a little clarification from the select board of that. And then if the project is not eligible for internal pickup, as in going into the project to pick it up, is there some cutoff that might make sense for capping off, uh, the total number of units where the town says right now you would be eligible for pickup along the public way? So we have a couple of recent examples where there were two or three-lot subdivisions, uh, where the planning board, uh, required that they make a provision, like a pad or something near the public way. And that seems to work fine probably for two or three houses, but what happens if you have eight or ten dwelling units? What is that going to look like along the public way? And at what point do we need to, you know, work with, say, the select board and kind of, when's enough, enough? You know what I mean? At some point, they'll be crazy if you have double-digits homes and all trying to put their trash and recycling for each of the units along the public way. When we do get to updating subdivision rules and regs, maybe, is it 2025? We might want to explicitly call out trash and recycling. So subdivision control law does speak to adequacy of utilities, provision of services like that. Maybe there's a way that we work with council and be explicit about that, because, um, you've had some subdivisions come in where they've sought waivers from some of the, uh, street design requirements, where they would not be eligible for pickup. You may want to think about just, um, hitting that head-on and saying, hey, if you're thinking of trash and recycling as one of those services that your subdivision rules and regs are going to try to address, um, maybe we need to roll that into the mix and be very clear about, you know, the waiver standards or provisions and how it relates to, uh, trash and recycling. The other thing, um, is that the select board policy kind of makes reference to the planning board rules and regulations right now. Nothing prevents the select board from amending their policy. Nothing prevents the planning board from amending your subdivision rules and regulations. And there's another, um, board, the zoning board of appeals, that occasionally approves projects that also have multifamily developments. And so we think, might need to think about a little more unified and comprehensive approach to long-term, kind to get everyone on the same page and the expectations for trash and recycling. And it's a little tricky, because on the one hand, the select board controls their contractor and trash and recycling pickup. On the other hand, the planning board can sometimes impose, um, conditions of approval, as long as you don't exceed your jurisdiction. Same thing for the zoning board, so it'd be nice, I know there was great work done in 2019 to get that current policy, I'm just saying, especially before we, uh, have a new multifamily housing bylaw, we might want to at least start to have those conversations. And that's all I wanted to share tonight, to just have you start thinking about it.
And there is a trash and recycling committee, isn't there?
Well, there is definitely recycling committee, um, or commission, and the select board do set the policy for, um, as you saw in your packet, for, um, pickup.
Right.
And some of them, though they don't meet the current requirements, you know, a prior select board said, you're on the list because you had been getting it, we're not going to take it away. But anyone new, you got to meet these standards or you're out.
Got it.
Kind of simplifying it, but...
Can I ask, do they have any, um, provision for if it was a full affordable development? Is that kind of contradictory?
Who does they?
The slot board, did they make any...
No, I, I think they do not, um, they don't call that out, they just say, four more units, you're out.
Okay. So that's something that probably needs to be addressed, because to me, that's kind of... of contradictory if we have an affordable and then not provide trash and recycling.
So that's it. That's all we were hoping to accomplish tonight, unless you had questions.
All right, Bob, any questions?
No, just to address the point I had, which was, I wanted to see more information, I think, when we put this forward regarding eligibility, especially with respect to the condition of the street. That was a concern I had, because when you read the policy, I could foresee us approving neighborhoods or streets where it might not be possible to safely get those trucks down there. In the same manner, we have regulations which recommend when we can put school buses down certain streets. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Joni, anything else?
No, nothing else. Thank you.
Nope, that makes sense.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Morissette.
Thank you.
MBTA communities, next steps. Is that you?
That's me.
All right.
Well, Joe's smiling, you know it's me. So I just want to give you a quick update. So next steps for trying to address this mandate. So first of all, the MBTA Communities Multifamily Housing Advisory Committee, or MCMAC, was recently appointed by the town manager, and members are in the process of getting sworn in for their positions. And we hope to have their first meeting sometime in July. We'll be emailing those committee members directly over the next couple of days to get things started. So we hope to use this advisory committee as a resource to help vet certain topics and issues, to help keep the Planning Board meetings as productive and efficient as possible. And it's not to try to take away from any of your discussions, it's just to give you the perspective from a variety of viewpoints as you weigh in on the topic. So it's just to give you added information for people who've been trying to go through some of these topics and issues. And keep in mind, two of your board members are on the advisory committee, so we think that's very handy in this case. Some of the things we want them to do early on, besides give them a background of the nature of the requirement and, you know, the limitations, is just review the approved action plan, including the draft overlay district, and offer your comments. What are some things that you like? What are some of your concerns, even if you don't have everything fleshed out? Want to get some pros and cons for some of the specific properties or areas that were included in the tentative district. We did secure, through a recent grant, Dodson and Flinker as a consultant to help the town through this process. We did have an initial kickoff meeting between that firm and some of our staff and a tour of the town to show them a lot of the different areas that were being considered for the draft overlay district. We do have in your packet some sample zoning for MBTA communities as provided by DHCD, now known as the Executive Office of Housing in Livable Communities. So one possible approach we thought of is taking this draft language, its sample, and kind of go through section by section, see what might work for Westward, what might not, and make changes to make it viable for Westward. And then as part of engaging with the public, we hope that we can bring this topic before the community in greater detail at the upcoming strategic planning retreat. Hopefully, we can do that, maybe get a survey out with that as well. And then our goal is to begin the formal public hearing process by either December or January in order to have things wrapped up before March 2024 town meeting. So I don't know if you have any general questions or thoughts, if you take issue with any of this, or if you want to act independently of MCMAC, or you want their input.
We definitely want their input.
Do you want us to sort of vet some of the topics, get their input, and then bring that to you for each session?
Most efficient way to do it. I don't know what you guys think, but definitely. I mean, these folks are going to put this hard work in.
I think we have a very good, very good committee. I think we have a lot of different viewpoints, and I think that'll be helpful.
Bob, any thoughts?
No, not at this time. I appreciate what we've just said. Thank you.
That's all I have, unless you have questions.
All right, great.
Looking forward to my homework.
Yes, thank you. You're stepping up. All right, next we have the review of the draft minutes from May 15th, 2023. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Bob? Will we do discussion first? Yeah, discussion first, right? Any discussion, Bob?
No, not for me.
Joni?
No.
None for me. So then we'll call for the vote. Bob?
Aye.
Joni?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
And I say aye. And that correspondence reports updates. Remember what, was there anything in there?
No.
Nothing. All right, with that, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Bob?
Aye.
Joni?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
And I say aye. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you very much.